Next order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us that are signing the pledge. Eric, you want to lead us?
Actually, it's not going to work if I do that. My speech won't hold up.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance, but the majority in consideration of others wishing to speak, please leave your remarks to three minutes.
Could be less than that. I've talked in the past.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
We have a home. Eric Peterson, Lewiston, Idaho. I've talked in the past about the app the city used to have called My Lewiston, which is a way of kind of reporting a lot of various things. It makes it very easy to have a direct communication with the city in partnership with it. When they changed the operating system here, they didn't bring that over. And it's really just a modification, what they call a ticketing system in IT, where they keep track of, here's something that's in here, and then they can track it, get a response, it goes to the right person all the way back. So it's already built in to most systems. There's a look-alike, and actually, a great one is DC 311. And what it does is it allows me to take things like coming down here, I saw at least six things I could easily report just to get things kind of cleared up, like bushes growing over a sidewalk, a branch hanging down two feet above a sidewalk. They're very simple things to report, but the effort to report now is you got to track down a phone number. There's one form, which is PDF, which you have to fill in and drop off or somehow get to somebody. So the result is, you got it great, no one's making any things like that done anymore. As soon as you, I think it'd be probably around $50,000 to budget for something like that. I've talked to the mayor and others, it just, it'd be a good way for us to partnership, the citizens, with the city. And it needs to be advertised. It's one of those things, last time, I was the only high user because nobody really knew about it. You just put it on a webpage and nobody knows for or anything else. So put money towards getting the message out, if you do it.
Eric, thank you. Eric, I have spoken with IT and others about this a couple of times at least, because you brought it up at least a couple of times, so I will bring it up again. But making a request to council here is probably the best way.
It needs money.
To do that, yeah, because it needs money. And they certainly can put that in the budget, but, and I don't know what the cost is, but I will certainly run that down again and try to get the councillors a little bit more information, unless you have some you can share too, other than your experience.
That my experience, but if someone doesn't take lead on it, it's going to just be forgotten in almost, in anything else. And I would say, he's too busy. He's got other things, but it needs someone, and IT's not going to be particularly interested in it because it's a lot of work for them. So contract it out.
I don't see any other citizens here, for citizen comments anyways. So we'll move on to agenda item four, budget items. And it looks like this is Director Johnson showed today. So he is our only presenter. And so what I will do is just ask Director Johnson to introduce himself and then give him the privilege of just going through items A, B, C, D, and E as he needs to. Councillors, please feel free to ask questions all along. Eric, yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm officially here for the Lewiston Disability Advisory Commission. We have been in contact about the budgeting issues and such, and it was asked that one of us be here to help support the budgeting requests. So I kind of have an official capacity in this, but I'll keep my mouth shut unless he says speak.
Oh, that's good. Director Johnson?
All right. Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here today to talk to you about the budget process. I think the mayor's already kind of hit on a little housekeeping upfront. Instead of trying to move from item A to B to C through here, this is just one streamlined budget presentation. So that's how we'll roll. I guess upfront, the headline in the newspaper today was the Public Works Director defining our, one of our main arterials as hideous. So how do we move on from hideous to acceptable? And this is, this is that process. We, we work through a budget, we define our priorities, and we budget accordingly, then we build and we improve our infrastructure. And so that, you know, if it's the public watching, or if it's the council listening today, or even the staff that's, you know, working for the public, or working for the city of Lewiston, this is how we get things done. We come together like this at a work session, and we discuss what are our priorities, where do we want to go, what's important to us. And some of these things are impactful by utility rates, some of these are general funds, some of these are grants that we pursue or don't pursue, and the strings that are tied to those. And so that, that's why I kind of want to say this, this is an intricate part of the process of improving your city and the services the city provides to you. The budget, the budget's a living, breathing document, you know, so yes, the water and sewer systems, they don't track the fiscal year. They operate like they're going to operate. There's going to be emergencies, there's going to be windfalls, there's going to be shortfalls, and, you know, so I will come back to you. We may, we will, I guarantee you, we, a budget like this will come back for amendments because we don't know, it may be a good amendment, we got a grant, so we need to amend the budget for insertion of some revenue that we did not forecast. But I guess what I'm presenting to you today is a snapshot of what we've completed since the last time we talked about the budget and what we want to complete for next year's FY24 budget. I, you know, I don't want to get hung up on, you know, details that, you know, we worked as hard as we could, and I think Amy Gordon's staff has worked as hard as they could, but some of this stuff is, it's a work in progress. And, and we're going to give you the information that we have, but some of this is incomplete, and it will be incomplete until you have that third reading of the budget. To be honest, and I think I showed a few of you when we walked in here, the denseness of the Public Works budget is just too much to go through line by line tonight. And I have no intention of going through there because I do love my family and want to be home tonight at some point. So it's not, it's not going to benefit us to go through line by line, but I'm going to try and give you a high-level snapshot of where our priorities are. And I guess at this point, I also say, I don't want to sit here and talk for an hour or two hours or three hours. I promise I won't give you a Tim Barker presentation. It won't be, it won't be 9:30 tonight, I promise. But I also don't want, this is a work session, this is, I want to have policy discussions. That's why I'm presenting, because I want to get some feedback from the policymakers of, I don't agree with what, what you're saying in this, or can you inform? I can give you information, I probably can't give you all the information just because of all the different intricacies that Public Works operates, but I don't want to talk all, all of this presentation. I want to have this come back, back and forth. And just the way this is going to flow, raise your hand, please, please. I'll let the mayor run the meeting, but I won't be offended if you bark out to me and ask some questions. I think a lot of this, of what I'm, what we have laid out is specific, the theme this year is level of service. I think you've seen it, I know you saw it yesterday with fire and police, you know, we can control what we can control, we can't control what we can't control. What I mean by that is if it's fuel, if it's ammunition for the police, or if it's water treatment chemicals, we're at the mercy of what the, the, the market says. And so when we come back and we say, this is going to impact our ability to provide a service, some of that is, is really hard to define. I think there was the memo that I provided you, paint striping. When we striped the streets, the cost of paint went up about 20%. So you either have to raise the budget 20% to stripe the same amount of lanes, or we stripe less at the same cost. And so that's what I'm trying to get across. There's always savings, there's always a way to be more efficient with it, and that's what we strive to do all the time. But at the end of the day, we can, we can find ways to save money and how we operate, but we can't control energy costs, fuel costs, material costs. Those are things that we, we have to operate as a city, and we're just like everybody else out there. We're feeling, we're feeling supply chain issues, we're feeling inflation, we're even finding the availability of some of the products that we use aren't always there, and at least not there at the, at the quality that we're used to. So this is, this is just trying to communicate to you that this is, this is a level of service. I'm leaning on you as the council to tell me, this is what we expect. We expect you to stripe the lanes, all of the lane miles within the city of Lewiston once a year, because that's what we expect. If it's not that, I need to know that. If it's, no, you should stripe them twice a year. I get complaints because the lanes aren't clear enough, communicate that. I need to know that because that's, that's how we set these budgets. Finally, last little bit of housekeeping is, all of this, you know, I'm not, I'm not a ledger person, I am more of a project mind person of, what is the end result? We're trying to build a wastewater treatment plant. That's what we're trying to get to. How are we going to do through the design, the construction, all the way back to the budgeting process? What feeds into this budgeting process is the strategic plan. It feeds multiple facility plans. If it's a water, water plant, the stormwater master plan, the transportation master plan, and the ADA transition plan. Those all are critical documents that we live off of every single day. I may or may not reference them as we go through, because it would just take too long and say, this is called out in the ADA transition plan, this one was called out in the water master plan. But I want to let you know, we don't just arbitrarily take, you know, these requests or these projects within the capital project and say, you know, this one sounds like a good one. We, we, we go by these documents, we go by the guidance of the, of the council, we go by the guidance of the public. You know, this is, this is, the budget is a kind of a compilation of all of these guiding documents, and, and there's nothing in here that can't be changed. So as we work through it, the more feedback we get, the more direction we're provided, whether it's from you or the public, the better product that we can provide for the city. And with that, we will move on to who we are, what we do. So we are the Public Works Department, we are roughly 72 employees currently. We have a couple seasonal's right now, now that it is summer, so we are somewhere between 70 and 80 people typically on the lower end, so 72. We are made up of the administration, so I am one of the administrators. We also have Wendy Lavoy, we have Jill Tolman, we have Haley Kelly. Those are the three that have put the work, the work into this presentation. I think you far too often hear me, you read the words, I am not just Public Works. As I've said, there's other, other employees, those that are in work conditions that are not always favorable, but right now, I do want to acknowledge the admin who put, put the work into this budget that we're seeing tonight, which includes this PowerPoint. So thank you to them. And then going clockwise, the Water Division, that's made up of two separate divisions, our distribution and then water treatment. So the distribution folks handle the pipes that are in the streets that get to your house. The water treatment handle the wells, the reservoirs, the water treatment plant, those large, you know, water vessels or treatment facilities. Sanitation, that's the smallest division, which is basically the transfer station, the four employees that manage and work up there at the transfer station. Streets, self-explanatory, they, they are the, everything from the snowplows to, you know, cleaning out ditches and responding to flooding. Wastewater, that's also broken out into two divisions, collections and then treatment. So collections are the ones who handle the streets, pipes within the streets, and waste, and then the treatment are the folks that are working out at the wastewater treatment plant. Finally, is the Engineering Division, they are the ones who provide all the support staff. So that Engineering Division's a much bigger umbrella, that includes GIS, asset management, surveying, and then, and then the engineers. And so they provide basically what I just said, surveying, asset management, and design, traffic, traffic counts and studies and things like that. And then they do, the bulk of the heavy lifting they're doing right now is all the investment that we're doing into the wastewater and water treatment systems. So they're extremely busy right now, and then they also handle the development review component as subdivisions come in, so looking at how the infrastructure within the city Lewiston can handle growth. Quick overview of what we're going to talk about today, I'm going to give you an overview of what kind of, I think we've talked about it ad nauseam, but I kind of just want to keep reminding people how, how funding works within our department, General Fund and Enterprise Fund, why the colors of money matter. I'll get into the details of that later. Then I'm just going to go through, give you a little highlight of what we've done through '23, what we've accomplished to date, kind of the tail end of what we hope to accomplish moving forward in the end of '23, and then rolling into '24. Because as I said, we do our best to keep the finance people happy, but our projects often overlap from one fiscal year to the other. And so I may, some of these projects may go back to fiscal year '21, and we're wrapping them up in '23. That's not our intent, but that's just the way project development goes. So that's generally where we're going to go. All right. General Fund versus Enterprise Fund, I think General Fund is funded through property taxes. They, the, the bulk of what Public Works is funded through the General Fund is transportation. And so what that chart there in front of you right now is FY23. So that's currently how we fund our, you know, what comes out of General Fund. So that is transportation and stormwater. You can see everything from highway user fund, property taxes, road and bridge tax, those are all revenue sources that go towards transportation, stormwater. When we get into the Enterprise Funds, those are much more rigid, so you're going to see a wastewater user fee goes only to the wastewater fund, water user fee only goes to the water fund, sanitation user fee only goes to sanitation. That's pretty much how we've operated for the longest, you know, for as long as we can remember. Those are our revenue sources. Now moving forward into FY24, you'll see just a slight shift in that stormwater will now be considered an Enterprise Fund. So starting January 1, or at least that's what we're saying, January 1, we will collect a user fee for stormwater. So that will become its own Enterprise Fund, so that will strip away the demand within the transportation fund for the stormwater needs. So if there's any questions on where the funding comes from, how we use it, seeing none, we'll move forward. All right, some quick highlights of what we've accomplished over the last year since we last discussed. The picture on the left there, that's the, that's the skid steer that was approved in the FY23 budget. Again, like I was talking about supply chain and, and getting, getting material, same thing with equipment, that, that literally showed up last month, not even, maybe it was in this month, it's been, we're almost through this month. But we ordered it when the, when the budget was completed or adopted in October, and it shows up, you know, what is that, eight months later, nine months later? So that just gives you an idea of how long some of this, you know, some of these pieces of equipment take to get into our hands. I will say the staff has been extremely appreciative of this piece of equipment. I wanted to get a, a before and after shot of what we were using before, I think if I remember last year, I showed you, the staff didn't feel safe operating the old skid steer, it was just so antiquated, worn out, the controls were, the hydraulics had slop in them, so you'd never quite trusted having people work around you. Having a new piece of equipment show up for people, I mean, our staff takes pride in their work and take, you know, they like to see the community look well. And so if you give them tools that allows them to do their job better and safely, I think we, we start to see results coming out of that. Transportation, it's been a year of, of kind of ramping up our asset management, getting on kind of our asset management software, which is integrated into the GIS system. So utilizing that, updating kind of how our, how we record our processes. You know, case in point would be when the mayor started a year ago, or two years, whenever it was, he wanted to know what, what do we do? What is the trans, what does our streets department do? With our asset management software, I can tell you exactly what employees worked on, we track all of our, where our guys work, how much they worked on this project, where they worked, the equipment that they worked on it with. So we can generate a report like that. There's no problem, we can, if he wants to know a specific employee, a specific street, and so a lot of times, who was the last person that cleaned up the storm grate because it's now backing up? Well, we can look, I generated a report, it said, two guys out there cleaned it in 2018, we should have cleaned it out in 2020, or whatever it was. So we're starting to see benefits from that, the investment in that software, we, we can look and see, and the, the report will generate, you know, we just query, say, we need, we've got a crew going out, we're going to clean out storm grates, when were the, what are the ones that were last, that hadn't been cleaned out in the last four years? We can generate that report. We're, we're becoming more efficient with what we do with our, with our equipment and our staff. The big one was stormwater this year, the MS4 permit. It's been in, in place for two years now, but we're starting to ramp up. We've got the stormwater coordinator onboard, who's been a great asset. The poor guy started right the week before the reservoir ruptured, so he hit the ground running with, with the reservoir issue and then the flood event just this, this month. So we've got a lot moving along on both transportation and stormwater. Capital transportation, so the capital improvement projects, the one on the left, I'm glad Eric stuck around because this is 21st and 19th Avenue. So I will wear my, I, I want to just commiserate with this group a little bit in that, so there was a grant for the improvements, the, the street improvements for 21st and 19th. And when we started doing the project that was part of that grant, we recognized that that little segment, it wasn't, it was 200 feet, was not, there was no right-of-way there. So we could not do that as part of that project. So we started working, I think it was McCann Property, we worked out with the property owner, we got the, we got the right-of-way dedicated, and then we, when we needed to find funding, so we worked with Transit, there's some 5310 money to get that project. I mean, it's the smallest segment of sidewalk, so then we realized there was utility conflicts. There was a utility pole and a pedestal that needed to be relocated, so we worked with the utility companies, it was, I think it was cable and power. And Eric is very kind to remind me when progress was slow. So it, it just goes to show, simple projects such as that, that the public looks at it and says, why is the city dragging their feet trying to get this project finished? It, it just, the way the property ownership, utility conflicts, and trying to get the right revenue stream to complete the project, it was painful. And that's, you know, the saying of, what is it, you know, 99% of your problems are for 1% of the, you know, the, I don't want to say problem, 99% of your time is going to be solving 1% of your problems or thereabouts. And this is an exact, a great example where we can go out and do, you know, pavement preservation for miles and miles, but it's going to be these short segments of sidewalk that users are going to appreciate, but it takes, it takes a lot more legwork to get that accomplished, just because of the complications that come with, you know, dealing, dealing with an urban environment. The one on the right is a Warner pedestrian pathway, you know, you can see the fence line up against the wheat field there, that is the edge of the right-of-way. So that's Warner. When it's full built out, it'll go from basically that fence line to the edge of the asphalt on the other side of the picture. You know, any users of Warner recognize that before that pathway, there were bikes and pedestrians trying to get to the new high school or the, the park, that were put into a precarious situation, trying to walk with no shoulder, and you can see there's a vertical curve where that school bus is about to go over that, you know, if, if there's people maybe exceeding the speed limit, and they're going over that dip, they may not see the pedestrians at the bottom of the dip. That was, that was, we received a numerous amount of calls and concerns about that. Is the pathway the, the end result or the best fix? No, that's, that's not going to be what we want long-term to serve the public, but it was an immediate need. We, we understood what the issues were, we went out there, we worked with the county because that is county right-of-way on the right there. City on the right-of-way is on the left, county's on the right. We worked together with the county jointly, they went out there with their forces and our forces, and we came together and we, it's not, it's not completed, but I will say, I feel a lot better knowing that the pedestrians who use that are much safer to get to the regional park or, or the high school now. So that project's completed, but, you know, we'll, we'll get in more into street funding and where Warner's going to end up on the, on the list. Our favorite project, the roundabout, so that, you know, this is, this is a project that I didn't want to include in this presentation just because of, you know, I think we received a lot of feedback that was negative. Since, since then, I think the use, I have heard back from multiple users of the facility that say it's not perfect. The signage, I think we needed to readdress. The mayor has found a grant that we're going to put up, it's called a rapid flashing beacon that it's pedestrian-activated to try and get a little bit more warning out there. And it goes back to the plans that I talked about earlier. This was number four on the, on the transportation capital improvement plan. It was the lowest budgeted item, we had money available to build it, so we moved forward. I know the pub, I know there was members, I've, I've talked to members at Costco that tell me, that's a bad project. And I tell them, I get, I get kudos, 50% of the people love it or appreciate it, I shouldn't say not many people love roundabouts, but appreciate the project, while another 50% think it was a waste of money. I am here to tell you, I don't want to build projects that you don't want, but this is one that, you know, overall, I think has been a successful construction project, and we'll see if, you know, how this, you know, flushes out down the road, after people get used to using it, the, the traveling public uses it more, and we'll see where it goes. But that was a project that we completed in FY23. This is, this is still FY23, so this is a safety grant for McSorley, that's McSorley off to the right, panning back towards 18th going up the hill. This is, again, just a pedestrian safety grant. It is in this year's budget, I think it's actually going out to bid here real soon. So that one, that is 19th Street, running back to, it'd be up to, towards Winco right there, and McSorley's off to the right. So this is another one of those, a grant that we received. Grants are going to dictate the time and, and, you know, when it's going to be allowed or when it's going to be awarded, when it's going to be able to be constructed, and the parameters on that. But this is one of those that, it's a great project, it's more sidewalk infill, and it gets pedestrians, particularly kids, to school safely. More, more sidewalk infill, kind of, now we're kind of bridging from FY23 to FY24. Another safety grant, and this one's a little bit more tedious as far as the timing of it, so the one on the left there, sidewalk infill, so this is on 17th, so kind of in the same neighborhood, but this is in front of Jennifer going up the hill, there's a gap. If you go up, I go down this road quite frequently, and notice there's a gap between 13th Avenue and 15th Avenue, just as you're heading up the hill from Jennifer, you'll notice there's no sidewalk on the west side. So we applied, this is Transportation Alternative Program, it's set for construction of '23, I believe, but it would be on the back end of '23. So it, this is another one that I'm assuming will probably roll into '24, but it was, I think it was actually awarded in '22. But again, when you're, when you apply for grants, that's the process, you're, you're kind of at the mercy of, of the funding. Moving forward into kind of the '24, I, I talked about, as we're trying to, trying to complete these networks, and again, talking about the ADA transition plan, we're trying to complete these networks within these corridors. And so 17th Street, so this is down kind of the bottom of the hill, I guess I shouldn't say the bottom of the hill, the middle of the hill in front of Jennifer, but as you start moving towards the orchards, moving south, you start running out of sidewalk, you get to Winco, and you can kind of get to basically where the Regent's building is on, would be the west side of the street, there's nothing on the, on the east side of the street. And this is another one, we listen, we get feedback that there's no, you can't, there's a, there's a more sidewalk network, once you get to the top of that hill, that's not connected. So frequent, there's an apartment complex up there, there's a neighborhood up there, but there's no way for them to walk down 17th to get to the mall or Winco or any of those other, you know, businesses on 21st Street. So looking at it, to be frank, what's on the west side can be complicated with what's available for right-of-way and topography. So I put in the budget for a $50,000, just to determine the route, where the alignment needs to lay out, you know, because there are ADA measures that we need to meet, and then kind of looking at where we can fund it, and then where the right-of-way sits on that, and kind of come back. So do the analysis next year, move forward for potential construction, once we kind of get, kind of get a more... once we kinda get, kind of get a more defined scope of what that project looks like. Uh, so still, kinda now waffling, this is another project that is in the FY23, it's actually not in the FY23 budget yet. Uh, we, we, you approved last night, the Fiber Seal project moving forward on 21st Street. So, that one, uh, according to the schedule, is set to begin, well, it's beginning, notice to proceed was this morning or last night. So, there's, moving forward on the design, uh, they, they will work through incrementally through the design, informing us as they move forward, uh, and they may need to better define the project limits. Um, and then of course, Fifth and Brighton, uh, that intersection, which is, uh, probably, I mean, I, I keep saying that the two projects that are the, the biggest black eyes for City Lewiston's street network would be 21st Street and then Fifth and Brighton. And so, those two projects are to be addressed with this, this Fiber Seal project. And as I said last night, when you're doing any project that is, is not just a surface treatment, so milling out the asphalt and replacing it requires the ADA pedestrian ramps to be replaced with it. So, all of those ramps, eh, the limits of the project. So, if we have to bring it back to stretch our dollar, any project, any intersection that's impacted by this project will have the ADA ramps replaced. And that's, that's just a federal law. Uh, the only, the only other added, um, which was discussed a little bit last night was, um, taking our lumps. We need to, you know, any project that's within the commercial, commercial hub core, whatever you wanna call it, 21st Street, those business owners, property owners need to be coordinated with as far as access and when their access will be limited. The, the good news, if there is good news on this, this is a much less complicated project than what we did on Main Street with the waterline project. This is a much shorter duration. Uh, it, this type of work lends itself to night work, so, you know, we can come in. Uh, there, there, there will be impact, there's no denying that. But I don't know what that impact is now, but I think, I wanna make sure that we get out in front with property owners to, to edge, you know, to let them know, this is what we're looking to do. Let us know how we can lessen the impact to your business.
Dustin?
Yep.
Um, I, so I know sometimes with these kinds of projects, they'll block up one lane, but allow the other lanes, so at least, you know, it might congest traffic or not, like.
Yeah, that's typically how, I mean, this, I'm looking at this as like a mill and overlay, which is exactly that, where they, they will mill one side of the street and then divert all the traffic on one side. So, you're only impacting that one side and then, and then reverse it once they're done. So, I would assume that's exactly what they're doing. And then, like I said, I don't know if it's an option, but I would like to see this done as night work just because there's less traffic out. Um, so, but, but I think what's important to me is that it, it can't be done in, you know, twen- overnight. So, if it's, if it's the, the, the gas station or if it's, you know, Sharps or whatever it is, that they have access to their business. You know, even if we're not working, even if it's 10:00 PM on a Friday night, they need to be able to get their access. Oh, this is a little, little extra. So, uh, this is actually the, the council approved, there was a little bit in the contingency fund. So, there was, that's 11th Street, and this was not the big, big rain event. This was, um, I don't, oh, May 8th. So, uh, that, that, so there's the, the food, food yard down there at the bottom of 11th on Snake River Avenue, they constantly had flooding. And so, we, we have a li- the next phase of Snake River, which is scheduled here in the next two years, will go from the roundabout to 11th and we will, we will work on those, um, you know, the stormwater issues up right there at 11th. So, we didn't wanna invest a huge amount of money trying to fix something that was gonna be a temporary fix. But, but if you look up there, you can see that, that berm is strengthened all the way up there. Instead of flowing into the private property, we worked, we worked in partnership with the property owner to say, what, what, what can we do that will lessen, lessen the impact to the private property eh, eh, and, and kinda streamline what we're trying to accomplish within the right of way? And so, this, you know, eh, this is not how we typically do projects, but this is, I, I, you know, I love the, I love the flow of the water, of doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing, is staying in the ditch line, not, not rolling into private property. You know, eh, you can imagine that amount of flow probably overtook quite a bit down at the bottom, but it didn't go through the food yard on its way. So, um, you know, kind of a, a kudos to the mayor and, not to me, but the mayor facilitated, but I went out there, met with the property owner, we kicked around a couple ideas. We took it back to the council. He said, you know, for a couple grand, we can, we can improve the asphalt berm. We can make it function better. If, if you wanna call it a Band-Aid, it's a Band-Aid, but it, it, just that event, it lessened the impact washing all that gravel through. Unfortunately, the berm still wasn't quite enough for that massive event. They still had a little bit of damage, but not anywhere near what it was before. So, just, just.
I see the property on the other side has little bags that keeps the water from coming into their property.
Yeah, yeah.
There's about four little sandbags.
Yeah, yeah. And what need, I mean, 11th is, there's no way, it's just challenging. It's so steep and drains so much a normal hill down that, um, we, we need to take a more comprehensive.
And not just the prospect, it comes from clear into.
It's a huge amount of water. And if you're sitting there, it's, you know, if you've ever been down in the desert and you see these flash floods, it may just be a sprinkle and then pretty soon there's water coming down there. The only, uh, capital transportation, kinda wanted to share two pictures I never thought I would show you of, uh, you know, that's 16th Avenue right at the storage units below the reservoir and then that's, uh, right in front of Burt Lips. And that's actually, uh, the, the lower one, it looks much worse now cuz it's contin- I think that was, I mean, I may have took that picture, but that's the day or two after the event and it's continued to slough in there, uh, and you have more damage. And so, to have two emergency declarations within six months, um, not, not what I'm used to. Uh, I mean, I, I, I signed up for Public Works cuz it's pretty boring. And it has not been boring for the last six months.
City Lewiston.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, you know, each of these, you know, one, the, the, the storm, we're working with, with our emergency manager.
Right here, Director, you've got a call.
So, we're working through the, eh, the processes. I, I, I don't, I mean, these, both of these streets, and there's more streets, need to be repaired. I don't have it in this budget. I'm kind of waiting for the process to play itself out or finding, you know, that's what we do. We try and find funds to address, you know, these issues that come up. But, um, eh, I'm at a loss. It, it's just, these things kinda have, have come up more frequently than we usually do. I hope we don't have to make a regular occurrence, but you, you will be hearing back from me. You know, probably, it may be before we adopt the budget, it may be after. I'm hoping I come back and I say, we, we've, we've heard back from the governor and we have some emergency funds or it's payment from the insurance or, uh, you know, the, the, the storm, I, LTAC, I don't know what it is, but it may be good news, it may be bad news, but we can't let, we can't leave the streets as they are. So, um, be, stay tuned.
So, Dustin, obviously, we're trying to get help. You're working with Mark Heard. What happens with bad news? Because you're right, we cannot leave those streets there.
Yeah.
We're already getting asked, you know, if I are making movement in fixing that. So, what, in your mind, what, what can we do as?
Yeah, short, short term, so like 16th, the picture up on top, we've, we've had it, we had it, that would, during the emergency declaration, we brought in a contractor who cleaned out all of that rotten asphalt and all the sidewalk and backfilled it, compacted it, brought it back up to grade. But we have not replaced the concrete sidewalk nor the asphalt. We've got bids, we've got contractors, we're gonna make that work. Whether we get reimbursed for that work, we, 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 we don't know. And that's why, I mean, I, we do get calls. It's washboarded, it's unsightly, it's, it's not to our standards. So, we're gonna make that one work. The Burt Lips, 13th Street, that one, um, we're, we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna bring it, first thing is to get the road back open. So, we, we're gonna clean that out, uh, and bring it back up to grade. We're, we're debating right now internally whether we're gonna do it in-house. It will take a while. We don't have, you know, the equipment and the resources or we will find, work with finance and our own budget process and find, find ways to. And it may be what we did with 16th, where we just bring it back up to grade so we can get the road open, but we don't pave it and we don't have the curb gutter there. It will work in the short term. So, that's incrementally, first, first step is to get the road o- well, first step is to make, you know, get the site safe, evaluate the damage, then get the road back open and then complete the, get it back to, back to normal. Yeah, I, I mean, going back, I don't expect the public to tolerate a hole in 13th Street for extended amounts of time. We, we, we need to get that road open.
My question was, like, we need to help facilitate that if we're, you know, if all those resources come back and go, sorry Lewiston, um.
Yeah.
Figure out a way to fund it.
And I think that's where, yeah, I come back and I say, we, we have a hole in the budget because we, the money that we would typically do for chip seal or something, you know, we're, we've now expended it on, on emergency repairs and we're still, we still haven't paved it. Uh, this is a, kind of a quick overview for, uh, just the transportation budget. Um, the big ones, so the drum, drum grinder, basically, a lot of these tools, uh, that we use from the old skid steer don't, they're either too old or they don't fit the new one. Uh, so, the one that we use the most is just a drum grinder, which grinds down the asphalt on a, you know, s- spot area instead of doing, you know, I talked about the mill and overlay, big grinder machines, this is just for a spot. Um, we use it quite frequently. Um, I believe it is now included in the budget for next year. Transportation, just kind of including, um, fuel, fuel has been the big one. I think you've heard it from multiple departments. Eh, eh, in the last two years, we've found a way to balance the budget with inter, you know, but moving funds around to balance it out, while we're, we're out of balancing power and we, we're just, we need more, we need more allocation for fuel. Same thing with lane striping, uh, supplies, beads and paint, they're, the price has gone up. Um, training for commercial CDLs, we're hiring, we have, we've had a huge amount of turnover, retirements essentially, uh, bringing in new staff. It's hard to find CDL drivers, so we're now pursuing people who are interested to working with the city. Maybe they're not, have a Class A CDL, so we need to train them. So, we, we needed to up our training. You know, it's, it's, you, you can't find the, 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 the drivers that are out there, you know, 15 years ago, the, the drivers, we could find them, we were getting more applications. Now, if they're, you know, they're, whether they're driving, you know, dump trucks or somewhere else, they're not available. So, the market's really tight on, on equipment operators. More traffic, uh, signal controllers, LED streetlights. Uh, the LED street, streetlights will save us money in the long run, but there's a cost upfront. That's, that next line, 375, uh, so that was how there was impact fees from, from, um, from the, uh, sanitation and wastewater and water treatment, that, or water. We don't do that anymore. So, tho- that, that rev, that cost is no longer accounted for in our enterprise funds, but that shortfall in the budget is now in our street department. Last year, I think we put 250 in. Um, so, I'm just kind of trying to keep a, an accounting on our revenue for streets. If we have not, if we're looking to improve the street network, you know, the, we, we kinda winnowed down some of the funding sources, which is, I, I, I agree with the move, but also, we need to make up that revenue from somewhere. So, um, we've worked with, with Director Gordon and we've worked with the mayor. We've been working on finding ways to make this balance out. It's just, I think, as we've all found, things cost more money and it's a challenge to find additional revenue streams. Um, yes.
Um, I may be way off, but I was looking at those, the streetlights and stuff and I'm thinking you told me one time that some of the streetlights or maybe the signals, we lease them from Vista?
Yeah, I, I, I need, we, we, the city needs to, uh, I need to dive in and be more familiar with how, I, I've worked for, I think, three different municipat- this is my third municipality and every time I've got into it, uh, streetlights are, are kind of a really sticky wicket because you have, yes, a power company typically, and we're a Vista, has two schedules, uh, rate schedules. So, there's the schedule where they just pay you power. So, it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars a month. We provide you power, but that is your light. You re- you, you, uh, you replace the bulbs, when it goes out, you replace, that's all on you. And so, we have those. Then there's another schedule where a Vista owns them. And so, a Vista will charge you, it's a higher amount, but they, they do the maintenance, the power costs, the replacement, uh, repair, everything. And so, it's a, it's a significant difference, like a pole, you know, a, a standard Cobra headlight for power is like $6 a month or something. I may be aging myself, that it's maybe more than that now with updates. But the, where it could be up to 24 bucks a month for a Vista maintaining it. And it's, it's which way do you wanna run? You know, do you wanna have the control of the poles, knowing they're gonna go out and you're gonna have to staff, you're gonna have to pay for the replacement and, you know, eh, that's all yours? Or do you just wanna write them a check and they'll, they'll take care of it? But that's generally how the, the lights go. What, what ends up happening, and when I was, I was over in Sooton County, it happened to me, where ownership happens, I mean, cuz it's not like the power company showed up yesterday. They've been here for generations. And so, old farmer Bob in 1947 asked for a, like a light to be put on. Nobody's paid for that power for 70 years. And then the power company identifies it, they come to the agency saying, we're not gonna pay for it. Are you gonna pay for it? Cuz we're gonna ask for Bob's grandson to pay for it. That, that, that ends up happening. It's, it gets a really messy, they just put up poles or they, you know, trying to identify ownership and which schedule this is in. The newer lights, i- it's easier. Main Street, 21st Street, we have it. It's just these one-offs that tend to get complicated issues.
So, it's no real significant gain or budget-wise, one way or the other, in terms of?
It, it, there's so many studies out there. There are companies that will literally come in and take over your, your light network and you just pay them a flat rate and they manage the entire thing. So, there, there, I mean, it's like buying a car. You can lease it, you can run it yourself, you can maintain, I mean, there's so many different options out there and each city kinda takes it differently. Um, we're kind of in the norm where some of the, some, you know, some of these are owned by HOAs, you know, or, or, you know, private property owners. It, it gets a little complicated as the interface between the right of way and a, a public utility and then a private property, who, who owns what, where and, and how much money they're getting. So, I, I, I think that is a good topic for, you know, down the road of, of sharpening our pencils and, cuz there are grant, there are grants for, you know, getting smarter with LEDs and, and investing in the infrastructure, but I, I will admit, I ha- that's something I haven't dove into yet. All right, um, in the interest of time, I'll move along, cuz we're, we're not even into enterprise funds yet. Um, budget proposal for funded requests, uh, so this, this kinda outlines where we're talking for capital projects. Um, eh, so that street preservation number, that's, basically, we're putting that all into 21st Street, the, the Fiber Seal. So, typically, you would see us do a fog coat or a chip seal or maybe a mill and overlay. That's part of our street preservation program. Just due to the, to the overwhelming need of 21st Street, we said, we're gonna do minimal investment in the other streets, we're gonna focus on 21st Street. That, I, that's, that is, that is what we're gonna do. And, and that is typically asphalt is something that doesn't sneak up on you. You can start tracking, a case in point would be Brighton Canyon. If you drive up that street, it doesn't look that bad from a person who doesn't, I, I'm not an asphalt expert, but I look at it, I can see it's starting to degrade. It needs, eh, it needs some sort of pavement treatment on it. It's not urgent now, it can get by another year and it can probably get by another two years, but that is a matter, you know, that, that, the more you invest on the front end just for surface treatments, to keep the water and the UV and everything out of there from degrading that subbase, the longer that road's gonna, gonna live. So, you know, eh, investing all of our money on 21st Street, maybe we'll look back and say we shouldn't have done that, but I'm telling you today, the condition of 21st Street is dictating us to, to take that action. Uh, a laundry list of, uh, capital projects. I think a lot of these I've already talked to you about, uh, Snake River Avenue, 9th Street Grade. Those are all, those are both funded through, um, and as well as Brighton, funded through the MPO or the STP funds administered by the MPO. The money doesn't come from the MPO. Um, with the 92.66%, uh, there's a few, for Snake River and 9th Street Grade, there's a few, uh, updates we need to do to the design, so that's where the, the money for that is. So, overall, we have roughly 2.5 million budgeted into our capital project. And as I said, some of these projects, like Brighton, will continue to roll ahead as, as they, you know, as the design and the projects move forward. So, these are, these are place markers for FY24, knowing that, um, a lot of these, I mean, ADA improvements, that's an annual thing. We wanna make sure that we are addressing some of the deficiencies in our, in our network. My favorite, pie charts. So, um, the text is a little too hard to see, uh, at least for my eyeballs here. Uh, I just, eh, I kinda, I, I appreciate the ability to show the public, this is where the money goes. Uh, and, and my favorite slice of pie is to show the discretionary operating costs. So, for. Uh, and, and my favorite slice of pie is to show the discretionary operating costs. So for, for our streets, that's six hundred thousand dollars. That's nine percent of our transportation budget. So that's everything from asphalt, fuel, striping supplies, software, um, all of that stuff. That's, that's where, that's the bulk of it. So, um, if you trim out from that, that has the highest benefit to keeping the street network whole. So, you know, that, in my mind, is kind of the, the holy, the holy land is right there, is the discretionary operating cost. That and labor. Um, those are the two costs that you invest in those, you get out front of, of your maintenance issues. Your capital expenses will go down. Um, the, the only other thing that I wanted to point out with this pie chart is, uh, capital expenses. I talked, I think, a little bit earlier about the color of money. And so when I talk about the color of money is, you can't spend red dollars on green projects. And so if we've got a grant, you know, case in point, those sidewalk grants, that's going to show up on our capital. I can't move that into our discretionary spending. I can't spend grant money from, uh, you know, from the sidewalk project and say, we're just going to slop that over into the discretionary and we're going to stripe more streets. Uh, I, that's, that's not available. Um, and so I think a lot of people see the dollar amount that are in some of these budgets. It's, it's a large amount, you know, capital expenses are two point five million dollars, but those are kind of dedicated, a lot of those are grants, dedicated for specific projects that we can't move around. All right, so that is, that is it for transportation and general funds. Is there any closing questions, comments, discussion before I move into enterprise funds?
I have a question. Um, it's in regards to the signal controllers. And in our packet, it says the city's traffic foreman intends to retire at the end of the year. His knowledge of how these signal, signal controllers work will be difficult to pass on to other employees because of the outdated technology. And, and I know that you have a request, but I'm just wondering, um, why is it difficult to pass on to keep them running?
So those, those are the main street, uh, main indeed, signal controllers, um, because those are nineteen eighties technology. They do not make those parts anymore. Our, our signal foreman shops on eBay to buy used parts for those components. I don't know that there's much value training his replacement to understand the technology from nineteen eighty and how to find these parts on eBay when I, I would think that, that it probably is a, is a good time to invest in current technology that is going to be less labor intensive, um, and easier, easier to find parts and materials for it, so.
How long do we expect those to even last at this point?
It depends. I mean, like, like those signal controllers, you can't get service contracts anymore for them. So we just do them ourselves and you can't get, nothing's under warranty. It's obviously all aftermarket parts or used parts or, you know, the, so I, I can't tell you. There's, I mean, you know, working with, um, Brian Birdsell and talking about the repeater and all the work that they've done on that, some of those parts, they don't, they don't cover the, the warranty and, and you can't get service for any of that stuff. And so, you know, when the service agreements, and we're talking about the radios, they don't cover this, and we're five years out. These are, these are decades out. So, I, I mean, but that's not to say they're, if, if you're a, a small town in rural Idaho and you've got one signal controller in a, in a one, one intersection town, it's probably not that big of a deal. But to try and run a couplet in your downtown and control, you know, pedestrian crossings and one-ways, it, it's, it's, it's cumbersome to, to do that. And it's, it's been a request, I think it's been a request as long as I've been here. It, it has gotten, and again, another one of those things that probably works. Yeah, we can probably train the new guy to figure it out. We can, we can say, here's the best buyer on eBay we can get these parts for, and we can make it go along a little bit longer. But at some point, you just, that, that poor horse has got to go out to pasture.
So can I ask if this is, since we're speaking specifically of Main Street and we're looking at making some improvements to lighting and other areas, is this something that, um, the business improvement district funds can, or, fund?
That I don't know. Um.
I think it's a question we should ask because meeting with Brenda, there's money there and not a lot of ideas of how to spend it. So this is a safety and improvement to downtown, maybe that's something that we.
I think there's, I mean, there's a mutual interest in, in providing a better service downtown and, yeah. Anything else transportation-wise? Okay. Enterprise funds. So as I said earlier, enterprise, so we're talking sanitation, water, wastewater. It's been a, a very busy year for water, wastewater, uh, even for sanitation. I will say the transfer station scale project has been a project that's lingered for many years and it was good that we finally awarded the scale rehabilitation. So we're excited to see that moving forward. Um, water, the bulk of what the efforts have been done, um, obviously were the water treatment plant. Um, and then the, but we did have a, some in-house, um, water line replacement with some CDBG money on Third Street. And wastewater, our, our continued pipeline replacement. And we got a, I talked to our wastewater interim manager today and, uh, the Vector purchase showed up and the old one broke down right as it pulled in. So we're, we're appreciative of that. Um, so the highlights of twenty-three, uh, so the, the one on the left, so talking about, um, water. The, the community drive reservoir, uh, they ran into some, some supply, um, supply chain issues. And so that's been somewhat delayed. It was supposed to be closed out, I think in May. They're running a month or two behind. Um, but that one will be closing out this summer, uh, as well as the downtown water main replacement project that is funded through ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act funds. So this is the water treatment plant project. So this is, if anybody, we will be doing a, a more formal, uh, ribbon cutting this fall, um, when the weather cools down. Um, so this is, you can see this is the new, that's where the filter membrane are inside of that. That is the repurposed old office building that we still use. It's got a new roof on it, but you can see the new tanks in the background. Um, very proud of that project. That, that was, um, been multiple, uh, that, this one, I've been to multiple conferences to present on it. The, the, um, alternative design, um, or progressive design build concept was, um, huge for how this project was able to be accomplished. I mean, with, with building this during the, uh, COVID and supply chain and cost runs on, on everything from pipe to filter membranes, uh, it, it's been a huge project and, and it's been great to have that one actually in the review mirror. Um, this is the wastewater plant. So this is the other project that closed out, the wastewater plant. I mean, what you've just seen from the last video to this video, that's about sixty million dollars. Um, this is the aeration basins here. Basically what the wastewater plant did was construct a brand-new plant in concert next to the other one. So doubling the size of, um, you know, the, these aeration basins, upgrading the pumps. Um, I do want to share, you know, so what happens in this treatment process here is you basically blow bubbles into the wastewater and it feeds the bugs that eat all of the, the, the bad, um, you know, bacteria that are in that. The, the, the power used to generate those, that, the, the, the pumps, we consume about three hundred thousand dollars a year in power, just, just for that. So kind of put that in context of, you know, where, where we spend our money and what we have flexibility. And that's the new, that's the new plant that's more efficient. So, um, you know, the amount of, of power and chemicals and, and resources that just a, a, a fully functioning plant goes through. It, it, it's, it's an enormous amount of money and an enormous amount of investment that goes into this infrastructure. Uh, our favorite topic, um, beyond Twenty-first Street is the high reservoir. So January eighteenth, we know there was that rupture. Um, this is the picture that kind of demonstrates generally the size and scope of how large that, that reservoir was or is. The, the, the rupture off to the side. Um, again, kind of similar to the, to the, what I already talked about, the impact to the, um, streets. The impact to the water, um, um, utility is, is to be determined. We're still waiting for, um, you know, some emergency funds or, or funding in general from the state or the Fed. Um, we don't know. We don't know what that is. We do, we have spent down our reserves to get this system back online, which is on schedule to be back online at the, uh, end of July. Uh, meeting every day, uh, with the engineers to talk and DEQ to find what's the next step in the process, how are we doing? How are we staying on schedule? And all, all indications are positive, but where we go from here? I, you know, I, it's, I have, um, I've dedicated a lot of time to this project and understand the severity it has had and the impact it's had on the public. But I'm now starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel of, okay, we're, we will have this system back online, people will be able to water the yards. There will be a lot of things that happen with investigations and insurance and attorneys, and I don't control that. I can control how the, how the utility moves forward with the results of what happens and all that other stuff. But we need to look at the overall health of the, of the system itself, where we're going to move forward as far as focusing our resources. The, uh, water department or the water utility is, is due for another, uh, capital improvement plan to look at, you know, where we're pivoting. We've, we've completed, uh, you know, a new well, a new reservoir, a replaced reservoir, a new water treatment plant, a new intake. These are all things that are significant investments, but we're not done. Uh, the, 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 the transmission line that feeds this reservoir, it was item one A as far as replacement after the treatment plant was done. Well, now this reservoir has moved itself in front of that. So what happens with that transmission line? Now that we've amended the system, it, what, what do we, where are we going to store our water? Do we need as much stored water? Where should we store it? So there's a lot of questions we have. And it, again, these questions don't follow necessarily a fiscal year. I will, I know I will be coming back to you before next year to talk about some of our question, the answers to some of our questions and more questions of where we go from there, um, in, in planning our enterprise funds, particularly water. All right, sanitation. Sanitation, uh, so if you remember, we did a two thousand twenty-two, uh, FCS was the company that did a cost analysis for a rate study. Their recommendation, and we, we, we updated it just last year. Um, and their recommendation was a two percent annual increase for the next ten years. Uh, I think that was, they completed that right before inflation kind of hit. There's, sanitation is a unique, uh, enterprise fund and I can get a little bit more detail later, but it is contracted services. It is, we have four people that are housed within this division. Most of this is contracted out, particularly Sunshine Disposal or Soden County landfill. We don't, we don't staff all of those. So we pay a lot of, of contracted services out. What's interesting about sanitation, two parts. One, uh, back in, I think it was at two, I'm looking at, uh, Councilor Schroder. When we did the Uti- uh, recycling, uh, surcharge, was that two thousand eighteen maybe?
Surcharge?
Yeah.
Well, it was, yeah.
Seventeen, eighteen, somewhere in there?
It would be eighteen because I, yes.
So the commodity values in recycling bottomed out about that time and the city was not recouping the revenue stream. And so the city asked the customers, do you want to keep, you have an option. We can just landfill it or you can pay a surcharge and we keep it floating. So the, the customers, uh, voted or, or it, it did a poll. It wasn't a vote, but it was a poll that over. Yeah, overwhelmingly said, we would pay the surcharge to keep the recycling program.
And they gave us a, a dollar amount that they would look at.
So that surcharge kind of played itself out. Last year, if you remember, we ended that surcharge because the commodity value had reached to a certain point. There is a bit of a, a reserve in there from that surcharge as the commodity values increased. And so that, that's why, you know, it said, well, we don't need to do a full increase, two percent should keep up with, um, you know, inflation. So we have a, have a reserve we need to spend down. Second area issue is, uh, COVID showed people how to throw away things. And so, uh, uh, the revenues have been up. So between trying to spend reserves down and the revenues, we, we looked at it and said, we don't need to do a rate increase. And so our proposed rate increase for sanitation this year is zero, zero percent across the board. There is some adjustments that we'll be making to some yard waste carts, uh, to kind of equitable, you know, make, make service more equitable across the, for the rates. But that's, that's not going to have a huge impact on revenue. That's just kind of trying to balance out, uh, the rates for our customers. Um, for capital projects, I already talked about the scales. Um, transfer station floor, I think it was Councilor Spicklemeyer asked me, how much was that floor for? I pulled up the, the, uh, analysis report that was done. I picked the middle one and inflated it. I think it was like five fifty from, for two thousand twenty-two numbers. And if we're building it next year, a thousand, and that was a, um, a, basically a, um, a topping on top. Um, the cheapest option, and I, I, I'll share it with the, with the, with the council when I get to it, um, when we start talking about it in more depth. But you can do just an asphalt cover on top of it, which isn't going to last you maybe two years. And so they, they did a cost benefit analysis. Everything from the Cadillac where you're never going to miss customers, you know, you just, it'll cure in a day versus this is the kind of the middle of the road option. So that, that's where I kind of just, uh, bookmarked it for now and we'll come back and talk about the, the transfer, transfer station floor rehab down the road. Again, um, just a general, that you can see contracted service, that's that, contracted services is eighty-one percent, almost six million dollars of the budget. So, um, there's very little wiggle room, uh, that we have for discretionary spending. In fact, it's one percent of the budget. So you can see, you know, it's, 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 we, we, we have the equipment that we run up there. So we, we're impacted by the fuel up there, just like everybody else. But it's on a smaller scale when you look at the overall, uh, utility.
All right, what does, uh, MTCE stand for?
Uh, maintenance, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I caught that myself. Uh, a few things, and this, these are bigger picture, um, transfer station, uh, you know, what, what are we going to do with the, with the facility? What are we going to do with the floor? Um, it, it's an, I'm not going to say it's an older building, but it's a three-sided building. It's open to the elements. It's used very hard. Um, you know, I think we've talked a, a lot, um, about deferred maintenance in facilities. I don't, this is not one, but like I said earlier, there, there needs to be continued investment in keeping these systems whole or facilities operating, um, without them degrading to a point where we, they're a lost cause. Uh, when we do, I'm talking about the, the floor, there's some, um, down in the pit where you push the garbage down. I think there's, we need to do some, some, um, updates for, there's some drainage issues down there and, you know, it's, you know, you're exposed to garbage seven days a week, you're, you're gonna, you're going to start showing some signs. So the building itself, we, we will probably come back and, and have some conversations about where we, you know, how much do we want to continue and invest in this building? And I, I don't have an answer. If it is, yeah, we want to keep it operating and it's a great facility and it's a service to the public, great. If we want to move in a different direction, we can do that too. Um, future of recycling, I talked about the surcharge. Uh, recycling is very, um, temperamental right now. It, it's a, it's a industry that sees a lot of, um, movement in the commodities, how the commodities are transported, uh, received, where they're going, what they're recycled for. Uh, and I think nationwide, we're just, the, the, the public and those who are the recyclers are trying to figure out how we, how we, how we stay in front of that. And, you know, fortunate, I mean, there's a reason why we live here and it, it is a great community, but it's also somewhat remote. And so if we were, say, Tri-Cities or Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, you're on an interstate, maybe you're on a river, I mean, we are on a river, maybe that's the option, but we're not on an interstate. We're not, we, we don't get the, the services to, the case in point would be glass recycling. So often glasses, it, it competes with sand. And so for us to try and push glass out of the valley somewhere for glass-to-glass recycling, maybe that's not the most environmentally friendly way to, to handle that. I'm not going to sit here and tell you what, what is, but, you know, that's, this is something we need to have a higher level conversation and that's something I'll probably come back to you later this year to talk about, just generally, what are we going to be doing with recycling? Um, equipment has been an ongoing issue and it's not a, it, it's just, uh, our fleet maintenance people do a great job. But, you know, as we have some of these, these, um, pieces of equipment that are outlying, you know, like the transfer station, they don't have time to come service some of these. And so that's, that's our backup loader that hasn't worked for, I think I brought this up last year's budget. So, you know, we, we've had a struggle and we can't meet our budget if we're, if we're having equipment repaired. So, you know, we've had a struggle and we can't meet our budget if we're if we're having equipment repaired by outside sources or outside contractors, and we're not, we can't get it from fleet. So and and I'm not picking on fleet, and they're 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 buried. And so it's just, we need to come up with a solution. And fortunately, that's our backup loaders, and we've made things work, but it's a problem that's just not going to go away. The big thing is contracted services through renewal. So our our composting contract, Clearwater Compost, we need to notify them by the end of this year if we're going to renew that contract. If we do not notify them that we are interested in renewing the contract, the contract will expire at the end of the calendar year of twenty-four. So we're now eighteen months away. If we, and we've had some conversations with the mayor, we've had some conversations with the DEQ. What are our options? And, you know, maybe we go back out to RFP. I don't know. That's something that we need to discuss, where we're going with our our composting. That also impacts our biosolids at our wastewater plant and where those are going. That that's pretty impactful for those. The other contract, which expires in twenty-five, is Soden County Landfill. So that one is a little bit more straightforward. I mean, I mean, it's as straightforward as you want to make it. They they are required to report their numbers, their public documents. They have to have a certain amount of dollars, certain amount of money for closure, post-closure, everything. So we come back to them, they run their economic, or they run their cost analysis. They say it's going to go up by five dollars a ton or eight dollars a ton, whatever it is. It's all straightforward. We can look at a different source. We can haul. We can look at hauling. There's other landfills out there. But the partnership with the Soden County has been good. We are sixty-some-odd percent of their waste stream. So being a good neighbor, we should probably communicate with them any plans that we may have.
Going back to the transfer station, didn't we advertise or or not advertise, but poll the people that came through the gate as to whether they would pay a fee?
Yep, yep.
And did we ever implement that?
We did not implement that fee. It was not a lot of rev, and I'd have to go, that was that was before my time.
Five or six?
Uh, yeah, yeah. And part of, part of, and I know it seems weird to say, and I don't know quite understand the information. Internet out there has been touch and go. In fact, when the rail bridge goes up, we lose internet. So so to run cards and payment, we needed to make sure, and we've been working with IT, and we've, we have pretty good internet, but not reliable enough where we would be able to run cards seven days a week. And so that was part of the hangup. But, you know, and then, you know, Chris Davies retired, I came on, things shifted. So it hasn't, it hasn't come back. I I know that's something we we could, again, part of the, what is what is our, what is our basic services? Are we going to charge at the transfer station? What level of recycling are we going to provide and what cost is that? I think we need to, with this council, have a more in-depth conversation about what is sanitation? Where do, what is our level of service for sanitation? What do we provide and what does that cost?
I'm going to put you on the spot. Back to fleet. We talk about, we've had a lot of vehicles come up and from mowers to skid steers to
pickups.
What is burying fleet? I mean, when we talk about how do we help fleet manage what we have and then keep our costs down as far as equipment? I mean, obviously, supply and demand, but we've heard great things out of fleet, like they keep parts and stock that they know they're going to have to do regular use. So when we talk about those things, like about what's burying them so that we can maybe look at efficiencies to make bring them up to help. To me, that kind of equipment takes priority over if an oil change can be done in Jiffy Loop. I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. I I don't know. I mean, that that's not my department, and I'm trying to.
I'll I'll ask again, but
Yeah, that, I mean, Director Gordon was here, but, I mean, we we work, we communicate. I mean, we, you know, like the the, or our street crew is in the same, you know, the the service center with with fleet. We have a great relationship with them. And and I I don't know. I I'm not out there on a daily basis, and I don't know the ins and outs as to why.
Create efficiencies for them that helps you make sure your equipment's working. Those are things maybe we should talk about as
So what what is the question, Counselor? I can't hear.
And to what he mentioned that with equipment thing, you know, they get used well, but fleet's not always able to keep up with them because they're buried. And I, my question was, what's burying them? And can we help create some efficiencies there? Because, and I probably wouldn't ask the question, but Counselor Schroder said, yes, they are. And so I thought maybe somebody knew what was going on and how we could help them as a council, make sure we're
Well, my understanding is that sanitation does not pay, pay fleet rental rates on this piece of equipment. And so because of that, it's up to sanitation to maintain. So fleet has no obligation to sanitation. That's what it used to be, I presume.
Yeah, I'm
And that decision was made because when we purchased a new loader out at the transfer station, I was still here. And we were going to get like little to nothing for trade-in on that thing. I mean, very minimal. So it's like, why not just run it till the tires fall off? You know, except at the time, it was due for a new set of tires at about, I don't know how much they were back then, eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a tire. And the funny story is that fleet said, we're not going to put new tires on it. You're going to, the new tractor was coming in about four months, and then you're not going to have that. And I said, you know, nonsense. We've been paying into this fund for all these years. We haven't used it. Put new tires on it. So they did. And that's probably the same set of tires that's on there now. And so if that would have lasted one year back then, we'd have got our money out of it. Because what it does is the work that they've used this thing for is, first of all, it's a very caustic environment. So all of that garbage goo gets all over the hydraulics and everything else, and it just chews it up. And so we use that to compact the bins, like the metal bins and stuff when people throw their old bikes and stuff. It'll go out there and compact it. So that's where in town we're not putting on the other piece of equipment. So we've really got our money's worth out of keeping this, and it's worked a lot longer, lasts a lot longer, I think, than anybody ever imagined. And so there it sits. And so sanitation would have to make a decision. If they can get the parts, would be to pay to have that fixed, to put it back in the service. So that comes directly out of their budget, not fleet. The other, some of the other concerns that we've had over the years is, for example, when that piece of equipment needs its oil changed, you know. So if we called the services today, it's time we get a change, and fleet services doesn't come out and do it when they're supposed to. So that impacts potentially the maintenance on these things because we don't want to avoid warranties, or we don't want to do anything like that. So we need fleet to always be responsive. And, you know, I don't know what it is today, but, you know, it's just something that has to be managed, you have to stand top of it. Take care of your equipment, just like we're trying to take care of our roads and stuff like that.
Moving on to water. The water, water is the the most challenging enterprise fund that we're facing right now. And I think it's probably pretty evident why. We've spent down the reserves to to get this reservoir back online. And that's why we have reserves. That's why we carry a reserve. And, you know, it's the rainy day fund, and it didn't get any rainier than, you know, that January when it, when we ruptured the reservoir. We also, you know, it kind of compounds in that we now have loan repayments for these these two plants. So, you know, that was, that was something at the bottom, that's very bottom line, their loan repayment of basically two million dollars or almost two point one million dollars. So as we, you know, as the enterprise looks at where we move forward, we're short funds. I mean, it's short funds in the in the in the reserves or, but we're not. So as we look forward, we want to re, we want to replenish those reserves, so we have that rainy day fund for future events. Hopefully, they don't happen again. We can replenish it and move on and not have to face this again. But that also means we need revenue. And until we get some momentum, whether it's from the DEQ, whether it's the feds, whether it's insurance, we're self-funded. We we did have whatever that was, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of of emergency funds. But that that covered the first phase of the of the reservoir repairs. So, you know, based off the FCS, we just followed the FCS plan and the model, which said five and a quarter annually. We didn't ask for more. We didn't ask for less. We just stuck with the plan. And so that's, that's the full recommendation, is the five and a quarter percent rate increase. I I don't, I mean, I I don't have much more to say, other than we're short on reserves, and we still have a lot of capital projects that we're going to need to invest in to stay in front of it. I can go through these projects, but, you know, it's, you know, the reservoir recoding, we have other reservoirs in the system. These are, I say newer, they're nineteen seventies vintage. There's one in North Lewiston and one further into the south. And they're, they're nineteen seventies vintage, they're metal. But we're doing analysis of them and and looking at them as far as, you know, we we knew, they need to be recoded. We're going to do an analysis and see which one needs to be recoded first and how urgent it is. If they look decent, we may be able to defer that a year or two. But, you know, I I'm not going to sit here and tell you that they're probably great because we're investing in our water system because it has, it it needs, it needs some investment and needs some improvements. So, you know, that that's, you know, that's, that's the doom and gloom slide right there is, is that's, that's the, that's the state of the water utility right now.
And I don't know a lot on this. So what other opt, I mean, could we get maybe a bond with a low interest rate, low payment, where we maybe could scoot by where we're not having to raise a rate on our rate payers or?
Yeah, any, any debt by a public agency has to be approved by the voters.
Okay, great. So then it would be basically, do they want to have a rate increase or po, if if this was even a possibility or possibly a bond that they would want it?
Yeah, yeah. And that's what the 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 State Revolving Fund, the SRF Fund, which the voters did approve three, not two thousand nineteen, that was exactly what that was. That was a a water wastewater, I think there was two, two votes on that, and they voted overwhelmingly yes. So you could do the same thing that, but I don't even know that we would have to look at what we have available to bond. So, I mean, that is an option, but it would have to be approved by the voters.
Right. Yeah, for me, I don't know. My thought was if we could just try to find maybe other options, and it's just hard, you know.
Yeah, it's it's
Citizens feel like we're constantly raising things, and then, you know, property tax is probably not going to be any lighter this coming year due to various reasons. So I just, yeah.
And that's, and that's where I I I've gone, I've provided some presentations in the past where from two thousand four to two thousand fourteen, the city of Lewiston raised their water rates two and a half, two and a half, three percent. Three of the seven, three, three years out of ten, the other seven years, they voted zero percent. And so that has, that that has a chain effect rolling forward. And so, you know, like we just saw sanitation was a zero percent. I don't think that's sustainable, you know, mo, if if revenues stay up, that's a sustainable model. But, you know, these, these are not businesses. These are nonprofit enterprises to to provide a a service. And when you go, when you operate below your cost, you put yourself, you you have to sacrifice a service, you know, like keep talking about cost of service. That maintenance was what was, what was, what was sacrificed with with some of these, these deferred increases. And so, you know, I, my goal here is to come to you and say, it's two and a half percent. Or, you know, inflation's at four and a half, we can get by with three. Or whatever, you know, that it is a digestible, every year, we keep up with the cost of doing business. And it's not, because if if it's somebody at home trying to balance the checkbook, it's a lot easier to say, okay, it's a predictable two to three percent annually, just like inflation tries to be. Versus, well, we went zero percent, and then on the seventh year, we went up to fifteen percent. That, that's where you get that sticker shock. And it, and it's even hard to balance an enterprise fund when you're like, we're, we're short funds, and now we have to, that's what we're doing right now. We are putting in hundreds of mil, a hundred million dollars of investments in this infrastructure all at once, and it's hard.
So Dustin, can you repeat those years again of the minimal increase?
Two thousand four to two thousand fourteen, for a ten-year window, seven of those ten years, it was zero percent.
So an enterprise. It would be, it'd be interesting to know if those same councils voted to increase our tax levy. Because again, I think those are educational bits of information that the public needs to hear on what we've been stuck with as this council right here of those decisions led to this, we're now catching up. Where do we find that balance? And so when we talk about that, I think that there's two sides of that conversation. But also, where do we get, so can we get creative with revenue streams? Obviously, we tried franchise fee for streets, and that did not go over well, which I think we all expected, especially after our January eighteenth incident. What, what can we do? What? Can we just raise rates by five point two five percent? That's not going to get us to six point one million dollars.
No, no, and that's, that's, and that's where, I mean, our staff pays these water, water rates, just like everybody else. And we recognize these are high water rates. And and you're not, you're not going to raise the rates to a point where we're going to get, this is, this is the marathon, that we need to get a revenue stream. And full disclosure, you're going to get to a point where you've raised the rates so high that you'll get in front, and and then you have, you just can't keep up with the capital projects. And that's actually happened on the wastewater side that we'll talk in a little bit. But that raising the rates is not going to fix it. It it will, it's a life vest that we're going to keep us floating along, but it it's not the solution.
Five point two five was originally supposed to be four point seven five, but we opted one year to not go there. And it went to five point two five forever. So I, you just can't mess with this. And I thought it was eight years. My calculation was eight years that there was zero. And there was very few years that even had a cost of living increase on them. And so those councils just didn't want to have the community unhappy with them, but that's why we're here here today. A huge mess.
But presumably, counsel, we're setting fees to cover expenses. So if we didn't raise fees for years, then presumably we didn't need the money.
I don't think that's the case. I don't think that things were maintained. I don't think that things were paid out as they should have been. And really, how I believe that that we want, we, that was approved for the wastewater was that we educated them on all those years of deficit because they thought they had had increases. And in reality, there was none, so.
Yeah, and I I don't know the history, but I'm just saying, if if we went several years without raising the rates, had we done that, you'd just multiply the years times the rate, and that tells you how much more we would have had. And my understanding of that is that we cannot be setting fees higher than what the cost of the service is. You can have reserves, but you can't just be out there gouging people to collect money. Unfortunately, it seems like cost has risen so much lately that the increases are much higher.
The cost of maintaining and doing business, basically.
Here's the pie chart for the water budget. It's kind of the same, same issue. It's, it's a lot of, lot of power, labor, and bond repayment for the capital. We're investing an incredible amount in bringing up our facilities. And then that nine percent on discretionary operating expenses. So that's your fuel and water chemi, water treatment chemicals, the supplies, you lab equipment, everything with that. So, you know, that's, that is a small portion of keeping the system running, but but a very important portion.
So Director, I want to go back to that quick. Like, am I wrong in what I'm saying?
No, you're you're not wrong. And and I think I'm trying
I ask, I ask that question now because the council's here, and we're going to make decisions about future rate increases. So if the decision is we're not raising it, we need to know why we're not raising it. If we're raising it, we have a good reason. So if the decision is we're not raising it, we need to know why we're not raising it, if we're raising it, we have a good reason, then we need to communicate that, so.
Yeah, I think the issue is.
Not to raise money, it's to cover the costs.
Yeah, I think it covered the costs, I think what was short was uh, looking into the, into the capital investment, I think that's where it was. You know, we, the water treatment plant was a nineteen twenty-three, nineteen twenty-two vintage. It needed to be replaced in nineteen ninety, or nineteen eighty. It was, it was upgraded in nineteen late seventies, but there was, there wasn't enough. We can say it was the council, we can say it was staff, uh, and, and I think there a lot of times, and I'm guilty of it, it's just as anybody else, where I think we can get this go, you know, we can make it go. And, and I'm, I'm convinced, I mean, my, my wife gets mad at me, oh, we can make this go a little bit longer, and pretty, you're kind of held hostage to this concept, and, and I'm not saying that's exactly what happened, but I think there was uh, an under-evaluation of the capital needs in that period. And, and so the true cost of service was, this is what it costs to provide water. We're not recognizing that there's a, a, a future cost to, to invest in this equipment or, you know, the, you know, the, the wells of the treatment plant.
But we're, are or not allowed to collect to be able to put into that? We are allowed to?
It's all built into the rates, yeah, you have the capital side, then you have the operational side, but you have to identify it. You can't collect the money and then figure out where you wanna spend it.
I see.
I can let me do it? Oh, I set for those budgets for years.
I have to honor the rules.
So back to the pie chart, if there's no more comments on water, um, we'll move on into wastewater. Wastewater, uh, uh, I'll get to the, the good part, zero percent rate increase recommendation. The FCS study recommended four and a half percent. This one is a little different from sanitation, uh, you know, revenues are up. What we have found, talking, you were just talking about capital planning. We have a huge backlog of capital projects that have been kind of queued up that we haven't been able to get out the door. And so this is where we've talked and we've said, look, we've got, we've got ten million dollars built up for capital projects that we need to get out the door, it, and the, the money is there to build those. Mostly, not all of that, but we have revenue in the bu, on the books that is available to go out and spend, we can't build all of that in one year. And so as we look at it, it doesn't make sense for us to increase rates when we can't finish the projects that are currently in queue. And it's not, it's not any, I mean, part of it is COVID, part of it is we're trying to work with the, the Army Corps of Engineers to get easements for a sewer main replacement out on the levee, things like that, it just, it takes a while for some of these projects to get permitted and out the door. And so this is a good opportunity considering where water is for wastewater to say, you know, let's, let's get caught up on these capital projects. We've got these capital reserves that need to be spent down to get these projects out the door and, and not further burden the, the ratepayers. To be clear, wastewater is an enterprise upon itself, separate from water. But you also have the same customers who pay a water bill and a wastewater bill, so. I, I am fully aware of, of what this does to a household versus the individual enterprises. But, you know, this is a time where we're looking at the backlog for capital projects and just saying it, it, it makes sense to just pump the brakes. Let's get some of these reserves for the capital projects spent down and we'll come back and reevaluate next year and see where we're at. Wastewater fortunately is a boring utility. It, it functions, we've got the wastewater plant, uh, completed, or generally completed. Uh, as I've already said, uh, we, we spent a lot of money on chemicals, we spent a lot of money on power, those are the two big things that we, we go through that in labor. Uh, we have the same, the bond payment, uh, that we're, we're making. Wastewater, you know, I don't like to pick on water, but wastewater is, is pretty healthy right now, we're, they're, it's in a position where it, it, it's, 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 it's ready to move forward and without, it, it has debt, but it has, has money to cover that, we're moving forward. We're satisfied with where that is at.
Uh, how far are we into paying off our bond?
I, so we're year one, um, I can't remember, do you remember? Yeah, were these, was wastewater twenty years?
Uh, wastewater was fifteen years semi-annual payments.
Yep. And water was twenty? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so water was a longer-term wastewater, because wastewater had money in, built up for the project, so they didn't have to fund the entire project.
Thank you.
The new one, stormwater, so this is the drainage base, or the, the rate that the council has directed staff to move forward, so you have drainage basin one in purple, is that the right, yes, purple, and drainage basin area, service area two in the yellow. The current working budget that we have right now is that, that's the ten dollar and sixty cents for, for each ERU in service area one and seven seventy-four for the yellow. The ERU is equivalent residential unit and it's equal to forty-five hundred square feet of impervious surface area.
Uh, I don't see, maybe I'll look at this wrong, but I don't see Richardson or anything.
It should be on the bottom.
On rip one.
It might not be an exact map, might have gotten cut off, but it should be.
But that will be included?
Yes. This is not the official document.
Okay, just wanna clarify.
Uh, this one, again, it is an enterprise fund, it is an enterprise fund of zero dollars currently. We have created it with the ordinance that, uh, the council adopted, was it last month or this month? The, this is, this is the, the one that's taking a lot of staff time, um, in, in, in finance and public works, trying to figure out, trying to project for what our costs, what our revenues are. Based off of those service charges, our revenue is calculated roughly to be two point one million dollars annually. And that's from, you know, if you recall, so our, our fiscal year starts in October. We aren't rolling this rev, rolling out this utility out till January, so we have three months in the fiscal year of twenty-four that won't have revenue, so this is just a nine-month, um, revenue stream there for the two point one. You can already see, uh, Bengal Field is one of our top capital projects as well as the Joe Hall Ford projects. And as well as a couple other ones, these are all straight from the, um, um, the, uh, capital facility plan, the master plan identified in there, it, it's, it's, you know, the capital projects, we need to build up the, the utility, it's brand new, and so these projects, I think, will be a lot of in-house stuff that we try and get accomplished first, because we won't have the money available to go right out and build a a million-dollar project, so, um, just being aware that when I come back next year for this, this utility conversation, I'm not sure what I'll have completed, just because it will be nine months with revenue, or it won't even be that, it'll be six months next year of revenue, and so what we hope to accomplish early on, I do wanna make sure that the public appreciates or understands what we're trying to accomplish once we roll this out, and not that it just goes off and, and is not heard from again. But I also wanna be realistic to say, this is a brand-new utility, there's, we, we need to build up the revenue before we can start taking on some of these large capital projects.
So Director, you're in the chart here, and I know these are just estimates, you have depreciation expense listed at eleven years, or eleven percent. So are you trying to indicate that it would take you ten years to go through your stormwater infrastructure to do the necessary repairs?
No, you're talking about, uh, no, so that's just the equipment depreciation expense that we pay for the replacement of that equipment. And there is a front-loaded that we have to acquire that equipment from the street department, so.
This does not include infrastructure in the ground?
No, no.
So will that be reflected in next year's budget?
Uh, that will be reflected in the con, um, in the capital, in the construction project.
When we start talking about setting rates again, we're gonna be talking about it, what, what, um, rate should we be funding? Not only operating and maintenance, but these capital expenses that, you know, and it sounds like maybe we didn't pay close enough attention to in water and wastewater in the past.
Yeah, and that, that will be part of that, because, you know, that ten-dollar rate per ERU was based on a five-year cycle that we will rotate through all our projects, so if we move that back to a ten-year cycle or, you know, for what, you know, whatever that rate ends up being, we'll be focusing on that. You know, these are the capital projects, it will take us five years to complete that, and this is what that rate is to get that accomplished. And so again, uh, level of service, if we say, you know, that's too much for the rate side, we're gonna peel back on the capital side, because we can't peel back on the permit compliance, so we'll peel back on the, on the capital side and just invest less in the capital. You know, and, and that's, that's a, that, I guess that's a policy decision of five-year cycle is a, is fairly aggressive, but we have a lot of deferred maintenance projects that we've already identified in, in our needs. Maybe we get to the point where we get in, on the front end of some of these larger projects and we can peel that back to a ten-year cycle because we're, we're on the front end of it, but that, that is kind of a, that's a higher-level policy discussion once we kind of get a better footing on this, on this, uh, utility. And now here's the pie chart for the, you know, breakdown, and I'm not gonna lie, it, it, this is a challenging one, there, I mean, I, I revenue is a project, I mean, we haven't even adopted rates yet, so we're trying to set a budget for revenue for rates that haven't been adopted and then identify what we're gonna spend that money on, I mean, we've identified the list of needs and, and how we're gonna spend it, but it, it's the first year, it's been a challenge. Uh, so just kind of a high-level stormwater conversation. You'll be seeing a lot from us as we start ramping up, there's some, some just general, um, fee structure, credit policies. We wanna have the town hall, we wanna have the rate resolution, uh, the design manual, ordinance, more illicit discharge, these are all, you know, the, the design manual and illicit discharge ordinance, that's all part of the permit that we're gonna be in compliance with. So these are all things that you'll start seeing quite regularly, starting next month all the way through the fall as we start moving forward in the, in the creation of the stormwater utility.
I was gonna, oh, no water. In our fifty-year, uh, storm. When we had our little five-minute storm over the weekend, I thought, how many fifty-year storms can we have in a month's time, six months' time? And when that happened, we had runoff down the Blue Bridge that obviously looked like it was flowing from Clarkston. Is there, or, how do we mitigate that where we're, we share that that connecting bridge and we had water come out and it I noticed that it kind of flushed over into what I would assume is Corps of Engineer land property, but is that an issue that we're gonna need to address as far as how that connects to our system?
Yeah, that, I mean, Lewiston, I mean, I say this a lot, Lewiston is unique with our levee system that basically blocks us off from our traditional receiving waters, and so that's where these ponds play a role, um, so then you have this band of Army Corps that is a federal agency that we have no choice, this, they are a partner in this. Um, so communicating with Army Corps, the Blue Bridge, that's, um, it's jointly owned by ITD and WashDOT, but it is basically maintained by WashDOT, so I think that this came up during our PWAAC, um, meeting, Public Works Advisory Committee asked the exact same question of, should we be reaching out to either ITD or WashDOT to say can you make, can you make those scuppers larger to, so it does not impact our, I mean, we're, we're permitted MS4. Of all states, Washington should appreciate what we're trying to accomplish over here, how can we, um, mitigate that runoff from, from the bridge? And kind of the same conversation with the, with the Corps as we're discharging into their ponds and, and partnership and, and there's instances where they, they're discharging into our, our MS4 system too. All right, I think we're getting near the end. Our, uh, the utility bill comparison, uh, is something I like to try and provide for everybody, and so this one, again, this is a work in progress, this is not finalized, this is, this is draft, but I did wanna put this out for everybody to see. So on top is your standard billing, and if, uh, I think this is the third year I've done this, where I basically said, if you've got a three-quarter inch meter, uh, and you've consumed that much of water, and you, you have a standard wastewater, you have a sixty-four gallon cart and you pay sales tax on it, and this particular model shows you're in service area one because it's the more expensive service area, so uh, on the left is your FY twenty-three, on your right is your FY twenty-four. It's not significantly higher because of the zero percent increase in the, in the sanitation and wastewater. The biggest impact is that stormwater, so you've essentially added a new utility at ten dollars and seventy cents to that, to that bill, so FY twenty-three is one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. FY twenty-four is now one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. The, the model, um, down below, that's if you qualify for the circuit breaker, so you can see it's the same same consumption, same meter, everything, it's just, um, you qualify for the circuit breaker, so you went from ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents a month to one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents a month.
Just a quick question, we have two meters, that's not, we, we just pay for the meters and then one ten dollars and seventy cents, right?
You're talking about your residence?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
We have two, two meters.
Okay.
One inch and three-quarter inch.
One is an irrigation one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you don't pay the, yes.
So we just pay the one ten seventy? It's not based on?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And then obviously area one would be more expensive because of being lower, so the runoff.
Uh, area one is the, what we call Pipe Town, so it's more urban, so all the stormwater is conveyed through pipes, which is, you know, it's underground, so it's more convenient, but it co, comes at a higher cost to maintain it because it's underground, where service area two, which I don't like to call it orchards, because some of service area one, if you're on Thane, it goes all the way back there and, and then discharges into this drainage basin, but it is more, if you're out in the orchards and you're serviced by ditches, we still maintain those ditches, but it's, obviously they're right there, they're easier to maintain, so it's a lower cost of service.
I see, okay.
Probably that is all.
Should have like confetti at the end, what do you need?
I guess if, if you or, uh, public, uh, included in the packet was the memo. I tried to match the memo as best I could with PowerPoint, but you have not received PowerPoint, if you'd like, I can email that out, have that available for the public. It's, it's the same, same thing generally as what was in the memo, but I can get you that information. But if there's any more questions as far as anything we haven't discussed, I'm, I'm here for, for questions.
Um, this is, I have to go back, cause I must have been sleeping. On the wastewater one, in your, um, there you had an admin building refurbished for a million one. So I'm assuming that building's not part of our deferred maintenance discussions?
Yeah, so, uh, no, that, that's, I've had some conversations with admin, or, or not admin, it, for facilities, uh, to kind of make sure that we're talking, because, yeah, there is a strange interface between the enterprise funds, which kind of operate on their own, and then, and then facilities which operate everything that's kind of funded through the, the general fund. So no, that is not part of the deferred maintenance, so anything um, that we operate for water, wastewater and sanitation is covered by those enterprise funds, and, and it, it's a good thing and a bad thing, so they're, they're kind of on their own. But I also, I think that we could get some, get more efficient in our cooperation with facilities where we leaned on them to, with their expertise of how we could better manage our facilities, and so that's something I've talked with, with Valerie a little bit, but that's something we wanna look, move, move into the future, but that is not in the deferred maintenance list, no.
Uh, I think going over, as we said, having another conversation about the sanitation station and kind of what we, what we think might, we wanna do with that, uh, will be a good discussion for a future discussion, because you talked about going forward and what you wanna see us give you a direction. That would be a good direction, is have that at a future meeting to be able to kind of dive deeper into that, so I look forward to that.
It's unfortunate, I mean, not unfortunate, with everything that's been going on with water and wastewater and even transportation, sanitation kind of manages itself, it's a smaller department, a lot of that's contracted services, and so they, they get a little bit forgotten out there, and there, there are some things, they're not burning issues, we, we are sustainable, they're managing quite well. But yeah, train, um, you know, wha, what are the services we wanna provide? What does that look like and what's the cost of service, recycling, all those things are something I think we should, we should have a, a bigger, bigger discussion on.
David, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Councilors, next up, we have unfinished and new business, uh, City Councilor comments?
Uh, just wanna thank Public Works for, for endless, uh, hard work and being the-
Being the center of attention the last couple of months, well, several months. And I know it's not easy to be the center of attention, especially in the circumstances, so. Uh, just commend your team and hope that you pass that on and, uh, keep on keeping on. Doing good.
Can we? Propose an, an agenda topic in our comment, maybe to discuss the.
I don't.
The app?
I don't think so, because it's not agenda topics, but certainly you can mention the tu- topic and the mayor can always put it on.
I thought that was a great idea to talk about, because I think.
To talk about what?
The Lewiston app, because I think.
Oh.
A lot of things that we're hearing is that the connection of. Our residents to. How do they communicate their needs and communication with the city, so.
So you're thinking maybe you'd want to put on a future agenda? Okay, let the mayor can make that happen.
It's good.
I'm discussing it. Mayor comments? Well. Well, everybody's working hard, I know that, um. Finance is doing a great job for us too. I know Amy's been busy trying to. Get this all put together and I know she appreciates your patience and understanding as we work with this, these meetings are really meant to be more informative. Kind of descriptive of what the budget is, but you're going to see some hard numbers soon. Where you can, uh, take shots at those. And, um, that's when the fun begins, so. That's the last of my comments. Reese, Reese wants his mom home, so we've got to keep moving here. You have one too, or two? So item six adjournment.
And move to adjourn second.
And move to segment that we adjourned, those in favor, same if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side was then adjourned. Great, now.